Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the City Council Meeting of November 3rd, 2014. If you stand with me to the Flectable Agents, please.
My Flectable Agents do the life of the United States of America and to the Republic or which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with one routine and just as our own.
Thank you, and I call upon the board to forward their roll call, please.
Councilmember Meier?
Here.
Councilmember Howe?
Here.
Councilmember Altah?
Here.
Councilmember Ellison?
Here.
And Mayor Hedges?
Here.
Thank you. Now, next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda and additions or corrections to the agenda.
I will move for approval of the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
I've moved and seconded to adopt the agenda as it is presented to us. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed?
Yes.
Approval of the minutes of our previous meeting on October 20th. We had a regular meeting as well as a closed session, so we'll act the regular meeting first and additions or corrections to those minutes.
I will move for approval of the regular minutes of October 20th, 2014.
I'll second.
I've moved and seconded to adapt the minutes as presented of our October 20th regular meeting. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Then we got a closed session. Those minutes have been circulated. Any questions or concerns about that?
I will move for approval of the closed session minutes of October 20th, 2014.
I'll second.
I've moved and seconded to adapt the minutes of the closed session of October 20th. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Number four, approval of the accounts payable, the bills for the last couple of weeks, again in our packet for our review. Any questions here?
A lot of texts, persons.
A lot of texts, persons.
I move that we approve the accounts payable as presented.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to adopt the accounts payable as presented to us in the packet, and for this, I would ask for roll call.
Councilmember Meier?
Yes.
Councilmember Howe?
Yes.
Councilmember Altah?
Yes.
Councilmember Ellison?
Yes.
And Mayor Hedges?
Yes.
Thank you, and item number five, the citizen comments, or any items that do not appear on the agenda, so if any citizen would like to address the council, this would be the time to do it.
Tony Ellison, 407 Neris Division in Lowell. I've got some people to thank here, so first, I've had some issues up at my house, and I'd like to thank the police department for helping me out. It was a small thing for them, but it was a pretty big thing for me. And also with that, I'd like to thank Dan, the DPW, for lending a hand in there too. Other issues, I'd very much like to thank Bob Robinson for giving me a lot of advice and encouragement, and I just appreciate so much him helping me out. And last, I'd like to thank Greg Canfield for coming up while I was floundering around, I'll say, and pointing me in the right direction and giving me encouragement, and thank you very much. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Tony. Anyone else wish to address the council tonight?
Bye.
Rachel Phillips, 121 PHR for Dennis Thompson. I am the wife of Todd Phillips. He's been employed with the city for 17 years, perhaps even, I'm sorry. Thank you for inviting everybody to the strategic planning meeting, and thank you, Mr. Howell, for letting me make comments about subjects that were brought up. And one of my big comments that I wanted to bring up, and I brought up, was really about Mr. Robinson and how the whole team of guys on it, the DPW is really just going to miss him. His knowledge, his expertise, 26 years of experience will be very hard to replace. Seeing that, I would like to kind of reiterate everything very shortly, if you don't mind, my comments. I think I've been asked by many people to bring it up. Bob is 26 years invested in the city. That's within retirement system. He will be retiring four years early of reaching his full retirement benefit. Most people don't decide to do that unless they have for a good reason. For most part, what I, we all understand is, Bob just can't take the stress anymore. He has decided to take lesser pay in his retirement, and I think a few of you probably have such a retirement system like, that he is invested in, and I would like you to really consider, would you actually do this if your employer was not providing the right support that he's requested over and over? I asked Dan Dustjarden if Bob has come forward the last two years since his other 50% of the position are, there's two people that work full-time in that position, in that department. One is part-time now in that department, and I've asked Dan at the meeting, has Bob asked for support? And I believe, Dan, did you comment and say, yes, yes? Yeah, he has. It was May 28th of the ledger, and I'm sorry, I don't have a copy of that, when Mr. Howell did make a comment in the paper, and I would love to have it from me, I would love to read it out loud. But Mr. Howell stated that they were going to, I believe, hire somebody else. They also stated that my husband Todd Phillips does not work in that department, that he only works at the water filtration plant, and that is just not true. When you're a city employee, you want to be honored for what you do and how you work. You want to trust that who you work for knows what you're doing. And I think, you know, I know my husband personally kind of took that very offensively, that to say that he doesn't work there. He does have Systems S3 certification. In May, Todd and, and I'll just state this, my brother Ralph asked if they could also write their other certifications. Mr. Howell said no. He also said that they only have one week to consider that. He did ask, and I would like to read this. This is from a Lowell ledger. This is from the city council meeting on Monday, May 5th. I'm going to kind of skip the first part, but I would like to read the quotes that the paper supplied us. They did ask to go, to not go into closed session, to talk about the union negotiations. Of all times, that they said, let's not go into closed session and talk about this. I think you all understand why they probably did not. And I'm going to quote, or I'm going to read this out loud, and. Howell says the council to publicly discuss the city's negotiation with International Brothers of Electrical Workers instead of going to a closed session like they normally do. The council agreed, and Howell presented, a series of five pieces of correspondence between the city and the IBEW on various dates from April 4th to May 2nd, 2014. In one of the letters, the IBEW listed the four areas of rejected March 24th contracts proposed that the IBEW wants to focus on: grievance procedures, non-bargaining, unit personnel, subcontracting, and fringe benefits. Howell said it is the IBE's turn to make a contract proposal to the city. Finally, Howell said the city will not pay for two employees, Todd Phillips and Ralph Bracken, to get the S2 and the F2 water filtration certifications, because Lowell's water system does not legally require employees to have these certifications. And he's correct, I, we agree there. It's the manager's responsibility to designate who would obtain the licenses, Howell said. What would be the reason to get a higher education? Councilmember Sharon Ellison asked, is there a pay rate difference, or just, I mean, status? Mayor Hedges said, yeah, would you, yeah, would you, why would you be motivated to do that? Is it financial, or just, Ellison said? I don't know. I couldn't tell you what other people's motives are, Howell said. I can answer your questions in terms of pay rate, money. Okay, Ellison said. Howell said that before the employees unionized, the city had an agreement with specific employees who got a half an hour or 75 cents per hour pay increase when getting new certifications. Howell said this agreement was subject to infamous union unfair labor practices charged against the city last year.
Excuse me, Rachel, you've got about 30 seconds.
Okay, well, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I guess what I wanted to say is that we all know that we are in a situation that we have to face hiring somebody. Bob is leaving December 22nd. The timeline's been presented that the new player that's being hired will be, first date will be December 22nd. That's if you find the right candidate. On top of that, as you slid into the strategic planning meeting, was, and if I can't, I know this is, we'll have to bring in a contracted company. This was back in May. On here, it also said, and I really want to bring this up.
Finish, please.
We need to discuss about a long-term plan for staffing, water treatment, distribution, and part of, and part that would be, what is our backup plan if one of our top certified employees leave for some reason?
May, thank you.
Six months ago.
Anyone else here to address the council today? So, then, we'll move on to old business. We've got two items here, the strategic goals report. I'll hit that first. Mr. Howell?
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. The only update on strategic goals is the downtown government plan. A stakeholder meeting was held on October 23 with good attendance from a broad range of interested citizens, business owners, and representatives from community organizations. The consulting team will begin preparing final plans for public open housing presentation to the downtown government authority. We're looking at that public open house on November 20, so please mark your calendars for November 20. And that's it for your strategic goals.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll move on to our pending council projects. Piece of old business.
Yeah, I reported at the last meeting that we did not receive any bids for downtown tower removal. We'll reevaluate and we'll proceed later this year, early next year. On the underground mines, you had discussed that at your previous council meeting, and the report was presented by Light and Power. One thing, this is not on the report, but when we were talking about creating this report, you had indicated that if somebody comes and, you know, a citizen comes and has an issue that you'd like to have me follow up on that and follow up with you on it, and that was the tree issue that came to your attention. And I've sent you an email on that recently, but the update for today is that it looks like we're going to take trees down on Saturday. You were able to work with Laurel's of Kent and the local, and the homeowners to see if Laurel's could take the tree down, and the homeowners would haul it away, clean it up, and haul it away. So, really a great win-win for the area. As far as I know, the homeowners are happy with the situation, Laurel's is happy with the situation, so you were able to work that out. Just wanted to put that back in. And that's it for the council projects.
Okay, thank you. Any questions concerning any of the old business there for Mr. Howell? All right, we'll move on. Item seven is our new business, and City of Grand Rapids, Downtown Grand Rapids Incorporated presentation.
They had contacted us, wanted to make a presentation, and they're not here today, so I guess we may not have them. It was a beautiful one.
Okay. And Rochelle, Heisenberg, renewal of the lawn mowing contract. Does it propose for us?
I included a letter from Clean Cut Lawn Care, and we also included in your packet the last time we did this, three years ago, the results of those bids. And Clean Cut is asking for a one-year extension on the current agreement, and we would be documenting that one-year extension on the current agreement. And so that's what's before you tonight.
All right, thank you. And it is a local company?
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
I think that we extend the agreement with Clean Cut Lawn Care for one more year at the current rate.
I'll second.
And moved and seconded to extend the contract with Clean Cut Lawn Care Service for one year. All those in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? And item C, improve city bonding rating.
I had indicated in your packet that I would have a little bit more information, and I've got some stuff that I want to throw on the screen, because I think, I think it's important to talk about bond rating, especially as we start to move down the road and talk about potential listation upgrade and borrowing for that, and as we talk about equipment replacement and borrowing for that. It's important to know what's going on with our bond rating. Plus, this is really good news. The city was upgraded from an A to an A+ by standard of course. So, why is that important? Well, it's important because it impacts interest on borrowing and borrowing, like I said, about three or four times on this slide alone.
Receiving a call.
But the credit rating, or the, it's very similar to an individual's credit score. We know as individuals that we have a credit score, we go to take a mortgage out or something like that, and the banks will look at the credit score, and they're going to want to know whether or not an individual's credit worthy. And a rating for bonds serves very much in a similar capacity. But it's also important because it then impacts rates, and it impacts the rate that we have to pay on the bond that we may issue for a project. And I mentioned about the comming of a station project. The other thing is that when it impacts borrowing costs or those rates, that can impact purchasing. And this is going to be important as we look at equipment replacement and with an equipment fund, that if we can reduce our cost of borrowing and we can accumulate more cash in the equipment fund, then hopefully at some point in time, we won't have a 10-year plan that includes borrowing for every piece of equipment that we're going to replace, but at some point in time, we can start to get into pay-as-you-go capital planning, seems what it's called, or actually paying cash, or maybe partially paying cash for equipment. So, on a long-term basis, that certainly would be our goal in the equipment fund. An upgraded bond rating reflects positively on the community, and when businesses are looking to move here, to locate here, or to open here, they look at us, and they look at, how are we operating? Are we, are we operating well? Are we through a lot of controversy? Do we have financial problems, or are we operating well? And are our finances operating well? And I suppose lastly, but not leastly, it reflects positively on the council and on management, that we're working together to get the best that we can out of the dollars that we have, and we're also managing those dollars in an incorporated fashion. So, what goes in to the bond rating? What is the methodology? Well, the first thing is the economy. Now, there's some things here that we have some control over and some that we don't, and I'm going to point some of those out. Obviously, the economy is one of those. And about 30% of their scoring for bond rating is the economy. And the fact that we're located in Kent County and that Kent County is doing well helps us. The other issue is management, and, you know, the city management, the treasury, the processes that we put in place, how well are we doing? And that's 20% of the score for our bond rating. And they, when they do a rating, they spend some time on the phone with us, actually, and they will ask us a lot of questions. They want to know how well we know the finances, whether or not we can answer the questions that they're asking, and then what practices are we putting in place as well. So, that's an important piece of it. Another piece is budgetary flexibility, and budgetary flexibility is, do we have sufficient reserves? And you hear me talk about fund balance quite often, and you know there's that, you know, it's a different percentage or a different number based on which auditor you talk to, and I think it's different based on the size of municipality and all those types of things. But, you know, do you have a fund balance policy, and do you have a sufficient amount of reserves? And typically, that number's around 15%. Some will say 10-15%, some auditors will say 12-18%. I'm not going to prompt him, but the auditor will be here at your next meeting, and ask him what is the appropriate level for fund balance, and we'll see what number he says. But at any rate, budgetary flexibility and having those reserves on hand is 10% criteria. Another portion of 10% is liquidity, and do we have other cash available to us? And one of the, I think one of the big issues here is reserves that we have, and quite often in our water fund, our wastewater funds, are we accounting for future capital improvements? But also, under liquidity, they will talk about, the LCTV fund is actually a credit to us because we have that LCTV fund, even though we have earmarked it and the balance is set aside. It's there, and the money is there. The other thing that helps us is that we do not allocate all of the tax, the entire tax rate that we could, under the charter and under law. We actually do not collect 1.7 mils of taxes that we could collect if the council sort of chose, but we don't do that. And so, when we look at liquidity, we look at, can you get extra cash if you needed in an emergency? Budgetary performance, and that's the, you know, again, there's 10% of the score is allocated to that, and that's the area where, did we, how well did we budget? Do we look out over an extended period of time, more than one year? Do we look out two years, three years, or five years? But also, how well have we performed compared to our budget? How well did we come in under budget, or are we constantly going in over budget? And so that's an issue that we look at. Debt and contingent liabilities, that's, you know, the amount of debt that you have, and that's going to be one of those balance things that we look at, is as we talk about projects and that we're opening up. We want to be careful that we don't incur so much debt that we're overextended, and we're overextended on our debt. So, that's always a balance that you have to manage. Then contingent liabilities, I'm going to talk about this a little bit, but that's going to be pension, pension costs, and OTAP, which is other full employment options. And finally, institutional framework, that's the last piece of it, and that basically means, how are you doing compared to other municipalities your size? And their cutoff for us is 4,000 people, so municipalities under 4,000, how well are you doing compared to those other municipalities? So then their scoring system is really pretty straightforward. It's by categories, and they either say you're very strong, or you're strong, or you're adequate, or you're weak, or you're very weak. And so, what they do is they apply those scoring measures against each one of the items that I just talked about. So, let's talk about our rating. On the economy, they said we were adequate. And again, you know, where we're at, our location to the Grand Rapids, Wyoming metropolitan area certainly is good for us. My guess would be that most municipalities are seen adequate on the economy scale, unless you're in some of those areas that are really thriving, but most of the country really is just kind of recovering. On management, we were rated as strong, and a lot of that had to do with adoption of formal long-term financial capital improvement plans. You've heard me talk about that, when you get those long-term plans. Also, having a reserve goal of 15%, and that's what I've said to them, is that informally, we want to make sure that we're at 15% in general fund balance. I'd like to bring to you in the future, an actual policy that we would adopt, where you would require me to bring you a budget that maintains a 15% fund balance, and I think that would help us in this area, maybe even help push us up to very strong. So, that could be a policy that we could consider in the future. The other thing about strong, actually, is that this was an area that was improved, and they talk in their summary about how the financial management practices have been upgraded to good from standard. So, they've seen that we've been more proactive on the financial management side, and they've given us some credit for that. On budgetary flexibility, we were rated as very strong. And again, that's because of the reserves and the separate reserves, and they gave us a little bit of a clue there that they would, even though we're right around that 15% mark, they'd like to see us at about a half a million. So, that may be a little bit of a hole for us as well, although we do see the highest rating in this area in budgetary flexibility. On liquidity, we're rated as very strong. And again, that's the, like I talked about, that's the available cash that we have available, and the military is, as I talked about before. Budgetary performance, we were rated as strong, and they talk about how we ended the year in a surplus for the last couple of years, and we're projecting that we're going to end in a surplus for the next couple of years, and so they rated us as strong there. Debt and contingent liabilities, very weak. The lowest rating we can achieve in that category. And the big issue there really is pension and other full employment benefits funding. They said that that was a negative factor. And we've talked a little bit about that. I want to talk more with you about that. I'm not sure if we can address it, or if we should address it. If you look at our pension obligation, I'm going to do this off the top of my head, but if you look at our pension obligation, to get us up to 80% funded, I think we'd take over a million dollars. We're currently in the 70s. They tend to say 80% is a valid benchmark, but if you look at our history over a long period of time, let's say 20 years, we've been right in that mode of high 70s, and so we've sort of floated in that range. Pension, that pension liability is a whole discussion that we should have at some point, but that is something that is holding us back in terms of credit rating, and we're rated very weak there. And then institutional framework, comparing ourselves, evidence, we're very strong, almost at the top, so. And that's pretty much it. I just, I wanted to talk about the credit rating. I wanted to talk about the fact that we were upgraded from an A to an E+ and wanted to explain to you the criteria that's used, and the grading system that's used. And a copy of the summary, I can get that to you, and anybody else that is interested in the copy, and I can also send a copy of my oral presentation, anybody's interested in it. That's it. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions or remarks? Thank you, Mark. Moving on then to item D, Right Place Investment Agreement. You've got something for us on that?
I do. During your last meeting, you received a presentation from very close, from the president and CEO of Right Place. They requested our continued investment at a rate of $2,500 per year. That's an increase of $500 per year. We had committed to $2,000 for the past five years. We did budget for the $2,000. If you were to approve this five-year investment agreement, the $500 would come out miscellaneous, and you just have to move basically contingency money over to cover that issue.
I think that we should approve a five-year investment with the Right Place.
Okay, let's move on.
Support, second.
I've moved and supported to continue a five-year investment with the Right Place program at $2,500 a year. All those in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed?
I'd like not to vote. If you're abstaining, just do a statement.
Okay.
I'm not sure that that's possible.
I don't want to say no, I don't want to say yes.
I think the only way you can abstain is if you have some sort of financial, direct financial.
Conflict.
Conflict, thank you.
No, I don't, because I have to support it. It doesn't mean I have to support it. It doesn't mean I want to vote it down either.
I'm just going to tell you that I think it's in the charter that...
I don't know what you'd like to call it, but I'd rather not vote yes or no right now.
I'll accept that, then we'll raise Mr. Hall's question, and I think we have a valid point, but we won't get into that tonight, and we'll accept your...
I'm not trying to be argumentative. I'm just telling you what the charter says. I think...
There are some guidelines to that. But we'll move on. So it's a four, zero, one. Council comments, and again, you could lay it up there.
The fire authority will meet on the seventeenth. Did you get approved for the grant? Three days ago?
Yes. Forget that, and that was a great hit for everyone involved. Nice, great deal. Wasn't that... Yeah. All right. Thank you. Mr. Hall.
I wasn't going to say too much tonight, but I am going to say that I'm really, really sorry that Bob Robinson is leaving early. There's really no excuse for it. And I had brought up that we were understaffed in a couple of departments a couple of times. And Mr. Hall stated in our last workshop that maybe he did make a mistake, but I don't think it's acceptable. That's not an acceptable answer. And that's my opinion on that. There's two or three departments that have been understaffed for years, and they need to be addressed because if they're not, just like the lady that taught me, I'm a little bit upset about this. I shouldn't even be talking, having to talk about it. But Bob Robinson is a very good friend of mine, and I knew his dad, and I know quite a bit about his family. And Bob does things for the community. We might not know it, but he does. He's our city resident. Between him and Dan, I think they're the only two city residents. So we'll probably be losing another city resident. So that's basically what I want to say about that. The other thing that I want to make a statement about is Simon Kelly, really good friend. And I don't, I don't understand our long-term disability insurance and our short-term disability insurance or none of that. I don't really understand it, but I don't understand why a gentleman is let go when he only has been on long-term disability for three or four weeks. Sure, he got back pay, but I was told that I was, I was in a rush for information from White and Power, but yet here, in my eyes, I think they went way too fast in letting someone go. That's what long-term disability is for. So I'm just not very pleased about either one of them, two people and their jobs, but that's my opinion. The other thing is, it's snow time. We don't have anything done about where people are going to park in the parking lots. No rules, no signs. We didn't, we didn't discuss even trying to have on even on parking on a couple of streets. So we're just going to let it snow again, make it rough on all the city employees that plow again. And that's all I have to say.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Hall.
Planning Commission did a, last Saturday, didn't walk through much of the downtown area that is being proposed for mixed use. And every member of the planning commission showed up, even me, outstanding it. And many of the property owners that will be impacted were there too to discuss issues. So that was very nice to see. There's no meeting, but next meeting's coming up, November twelfth. And that will be six o'clock at City Hall. I'm going to weigh in on Bob Robinson. I think it's really nice that he's able to retire early. I retired. I waited too long, but it was an economic issue. I damn near died two years before retirement, and I've seen that happen to so many people that they just never get to realize what they've worked for. And if somebody can do it, that's their decision. And it's, it's not an easy decision. You weigh heavily on it, but when you come up with a decision, it's yours. And I'm so glad that Bob will be able to retire and do some things that he wants to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Ellison.
None of my boards or committees did meet, and I really don't have any other comments except to express gratitude to Bob Robinson for the years he has worked here. And he's done a great job, so good luck to him. And I also wanted to say something about our work session. Mark did an excellent job, I think, of leading us through some kind of tough issues and getting us to try to come together and pull some strategic planning, even though we don't all agree on all the issues. It was very helpful to get some of that out in the open. So thank you for your leadership on that.
Thank you. That's what I was going to say. I think Mark was very bold in helping lead us through our workshop, and we'll just leave it at that, but I really appreciate his leadership and also helping us to develop a strategic plan, which we haven't had until Mark got here in terms of looking at the broad future and what we might do and coordinating five different council members' opinions about how the city might move forward. So I think that's, it demonstrates his leadership of bringing the five of us and then previous council members and the future council members as we project a course for this community and how we fit into the, our other neighbors and work with the townships towards a greater goal. So thank you, Mark, for all those efforts. I really appreciate it personally, and I think the community should also. Again, the various boards and commissions that I have to report on have not met since the last time that we had this conversation. The Hill Memorial Fund has received its applications. They were due last Friday, and we'll be meeting in two weeks to allocate those particular funds. And so that pretty much wraps up what I have, and so that ends our council comments, and we'll proceed then to the city manager's report. Mr. Hall.
Thank you. A group representing the city business leaders in the chamber visited Blue Thirty-Five, which is an innovative space in downtown Grand Rapids, that's temporary and occasional office space for working professionals. This working group would like to bring that concept to Wool. There's a feeling that we have a lot of people who are working in other homes that might like to have office space on the side of the home that's in the community, and so that working group is having a brilliant discussion. In fact, they're meeting together again on Friday this week. In the meantime, we continue to work with the city attorney, Grand Rapids Foundation, toward an agreement that would deposit a portion of the local memorial fund with the foundation for investment purposes. My plan is to put together this agreement, bring it to the local committee, have them make a recommendation to you, one way or another, and really let them take the lean on it. And if they make the recommendation, then you'll be seeing it in the next, I would say, month or so. And then finally, I've been talking about Bob Robinson tonight, and as I mentioned, that we did receive a letter from him that he would be retiring effective December twenty-sixth. He will have served twenty-eight years with the city of Wool. Between he and Dan, with his three, three years of service, retiring next year, we're going to lose over sixty years of service to the city of Wool. And that's, that's not something that you overcome quickly, and it does take some planning. And unfortunately, we haven't had the time to do that, or we didn't do that. Hindsight is always twenty-twenty. If somebody's looking for me to say that I should have picked up the ball last May and put together a plan, that's fine. I'll take that responsibility. I'm the city manager, and this is where the responsibility falls. But at the same time, you don't have control over when somebody actually makes the decision to retire, and you operate with the best information that you have. And I wish it were under controversy. I wish it were a very positive thing. I think it is a very positive thing because it is a very difficult decision, I would imagine, Mr. Hall. And I think we should celebrate the fact that Bob has just performed very well here with the city of Wool. He knows the water system like nobody knows the water system. It's going to take years for somebody to be able to fill those shoes, and we'll find somebody, and we do have to move forward and keep moving forward. So congratulations to Bob. And as I've mentioned here, we have an aggressive schedule in place. We have something on board by December twenty-two. The other thing is that I want to make it clear that we have talked and will be talking with private contractors as well as other municipalities. One of the requirements from the DEQ is that we have to have somebody with an S two lessons in place by the time Bob retires. And we go through the interview process, and we don't find a successful candidate, I want to have a backup plan in place so that we have either a municipality or a private contractor that would be in place and responsible for the system. That does not mean that I anticipate that being a long-term arrangement. I believe that we, that that needs to be a person who's employed by the city of Wool. I do not deem that as a contract or a position that's eligible for contracting. We, you know, part of it is that we need a person for snow plumbing too. And that's one of the wonderful things about the DPW is that they, they do a lot of different types of jobs, and even though they're working in a water distribution, they snow pump and do other things. And so if we do have to execute our backup plan, I don't want that to be taken, and I'm here saying it so I can be committed to it tonight. I don't anticipate that being a long-term contract, and I hope we don't even have to execute that. I hope we find a great candidate. There's got to be another Bob out there somewhere. Finally, I wanted to update you on parking because I know that that's one of your key issues, one of the key issues for the council. And it's absolutely true that November is here and the snow's going to be flying, and my hope would have been that the parking analysis that we were doing, we had a meeting on it today to go over the preliminary data and then look at the future needs. My hope was that we would be done by this point in time, but we're not, and we do have issues with that area on the other side of town where your restaurant is, Mr. Althoff and where Mark is, and that whole building's there, and the main street end, I think Mr. Campfield is here. And I will commit to you tonight that I'll get some of those business owners together within the next week or two, but as soon as I can. And let's get it put together and see if we can figure out, you know, some, some agreement to how we utilize the parking over there and also make sure that there's, it's clear for snow as well. So we will do that. And thank you for making that attention. That's all.
All right. Thank you. We got that in ten appointments. Board of Review, we have had the heads up that two of the Board of Review members, a regular serving member, Lori Noble, as well as our alternate person, Dale Rogers, they will be moving from the community sometime in the, after the first of the year. So you have a little bit of time there, but we'd like to seek two more individuals to serve as a regular member of the Board of Review, as well as an alternate, an alternate member to the Board of Review. Continuing to serve on that group is Greg Campfield, as well as Aleah Breedenberg. And so we're looking for two people to serve as a regular member with Greg and Aleah, and also someone to serve as an alternate who's knowledgeable and up to date on all the things involved in reviewing tax values and helping to serve on that Board of Review. So those are two vacancies available. With that...
We have updates?
Would you, that's a short opening.
All right. Then I move that we go into closed session, as a lot of the old meetings act, to discuss union negotiation strategy.
Second.
A motion to go into a closed session for union negotiations as stated. For this, we need a real call.
Councilmember Mayor?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Althoff?
Yes.
Councilmember Ellison?
Yes.
And Mayor Hedges?
Yes. Thank you. If I might...